Welcome to this week's St. Clair County Board of Commissioners meeting. The types of business that occur at these meetings include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. As your elected representatives, the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners is committed to improving the lives of all our residents while preparing county government to meet the demands of the future. In order to do that, we need to share our thoughts and plans with you. More importantly, we need you to share your thoughts, concerns, and opinions with us. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings. They occur every first and third Thursday of the month at 6:00 PM at the St. Clair County Administration Building at 200 Grand River Avenue in Port Huron.
We'll call the St. Clair County AV for the Human Services Committee. We'd like to have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here. I pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, is there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Move to support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any citizens to be heard for the Human Services Committee? Okay, next, the updates. We have one A for year 2013 audit presentation. All A, you're up.
Well, thank you, that was very quick. I think in your packet, each of you got a copy of my presentation for tonight. Also, I think you, in the past, got a copy of the actual audit report. The presentation in your packet is a summary of the 2013 financial audit by our firm. As you know, you contract with our firm to come in and perform an audit. We come in towards the middle of April, spend about four, five weeks here going through all the numbers, then pull this financial statement together with your administration, your accounting department, and finally issue this audit report. If we go through the outline that's in your packet, one of the first things, row number I there, one of the first things in your audit report is something called the Independent Auditor's Report. It's technically the only portion of that report that belongs to Stuart Bovee Whipple, and it's where we give an opinion on whether your financial statements are presented in accordance with governmental auditing standards. Again, this year, you have what they call an unmodified or clean opinion. Again, it's a clean opinion, and that's what you're looking for. And what that basically means is everything is presented in accordance with general accepted accounting principles and governmental auditing standards. So, I commend you on that. Number two is something called the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. As you know, each year, the county submits their audit report to an agency in Chicago to kind of grade the audit report to see if it's done, everything is disclosed properly and presented properly. Again, for 2012, you received the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, and I congratulate the county on that. You submitted again for '13. I have no reason to believe that you won't receive it. And they go through your audit report in a very, very fine-tooth comb and look at every note, every word in the audit report, and make sure that they correlate from one page to the next in what they know with governmental auditing standards. So, again, I commend the county on receiving that. It does take quite a bit of time, not only on your staff's part, but also on our part too, to get that. The next couple items, I'm not going to spend much time on there. There's a page that's about 13 pages long called the Management Discussions and Analysis in Your Audit Report. It's a letter to try to explain to the reader some very summarized financial information and some information about the county. We're going to talk a little bit more detail than that tonight, but it is required to get that unmodified opinion. The next row, number four, is what they call the Entity-Wide Financial Statements. In your audit report, there's basically two sets of financial statements. There's the commercial set of financial statements, as if you were a business, and then there's the traditional way governments have always reported. And that's where we're going to spend our time tonight, is on the traditional way. But quite a few years ago, about seven or eight years ago, the county standards changed and made you report as if you were a commercial entity. And that's, you know, a few of the first few pages in that audit report. So, if we go to the bottom, row number V there, we're going to talk about your general fund. You'll see your general fund as of December 31, 2013, had assets of $16,506. They had liabilities of $3,839,000, which, they also had something called deferred inflows. That's a new title there, of $557,000. Deferred inflows, basically, are items that you're going to collect in future years, but they're not available to pay bills right now. So, you don't put them in fund balance because you can't pay bills, which left your fund balance as of December 31, 2013 of $12,108,247. And you can see right next to it what it was in 2012, it was $12,939,433. So, it went down to $12,108,247. If we look at the next page or number two on your handout, it's what they call the Statement of Revenues and Expenses and Changes in Fund Balance for Your General Fund. Your general fund took in $54.5 million. You had expenditures of $50.2 million. You then had other financing sources uses of a negative $5 million. So, for the year ended, December 31, 2013, your general fund, and you had a net change in fund balance of a negative $831,186. So, that's the bottom line for your general fund, is a negative $831,186 there. There's some graphs that we've included with your packet, as we do each year. I'll just briefly go through those. Page, it says page seven on the bottom, and on the top it says Budget-Based General Fund. Budget-Based General Fund Revenues by Function. You can see for 2013, about 49% of your general fund dollars came from taxes. The next largest piece there is Intergovernmental of 21, and you see that increase from the year before, from 15%, a 6% increase. And the reason for the increase is you started going back into state revenue sharing again. In 2012, you were not collecting state revenue sharing. In 2013, you started going back into state, started paying, and that's why that percentage increased. Also, you'll see the transfers went down, transfers in, because you had that revenue sharing fund that they set up quite a few years ago when you were transferring money from the revenue sharing fund into your general fund until that was exhausted. And then, once that was exhausted, you went back into the state revenue sharing program where they were paying you. And that's why those two percentages changed. The next graph there is the Expenditures by Function. And you can see here, of your general fund, about 40 cents of every dollar, or 40%, is spent on public safety there. And again, that's exactly the same as it was in 2012. And you can see, the next largest is a transfer, is General Government, which includes a lot of different categories, including the Controller's Office, the Treasurer's Office, the Clerk's Office, and so forth there. But pretty stable percentages from year to year. Again, the largest piece is the public safety, well, 40% of your general fund dollars. We also include a bar graph there for your general fund fund balance. And you'll see, although I talk that the general fund, for financial purposes, had a negative $831,000, that includes three different funds. If you look at just how your general fund, how you approve your general fund budget, you were actually to the good, slightly, about $121,000. And you can see over the last 10 years, or nine years, you've stayed the same or went up a little bit. And in these times, that's very difficult to do. I commend you. I know you do a very elaborate budget process. You have that model where you flush the numbers through. But you can see it succeeds, because each year, you've been able to maintain your fund balance in these trying times when your tax revenues have decreased. So, again, I commend you on that. The final graph that we've included there just gives you a picture, a line graph, of your revenues and expenditures for the last 10 years, and they almost match 100%. You can see, you almost sometimes can't even delineate the two lines there, they're almost on top of one another. So, that's very good. If we go back to page, two of the pre-outline that I, it's in your packet, where it says Analysis of Fund Balance. It just breaks fund balance down into some different categories, or different classifications. I won't go through them all tonight. Basically, the biggest one there, other than the, is the non-spendable. And that's because you had $4.7 million in non-spendable, because you had loans, you had bought notes from the drain commissioner, rather than the drain commissioner going out and borrowing money. The general fund bought them, and you're paying yourself interest, so you're getting a higher interest rate for that. And then, you can see, your unassigned fund balance in your general fund was $4,701,000 there. The remainder of the report just gives you a lot more detail on that audit report. What would I try to do is, in seven or eight pages, give you a whole synopsis of a 150-page report. And I can go through all the numbers. I know they told me to keep it short tonight. I don't think there's anything to be alarmed about on any of the other numbers. You can go through, and you can see the assets, liabilities, and fund balance of each of the other funds in here. There's a lot of other funds, as you know, that make up, that are utilized by the county to account for the activities, but there's nothing in there that you really should be alarmed at. One of the things we also do in an audit is, we have to take a look at your accounting controls to see if you have checks and balances. Again, this year, I'm happy to report, you didn't have any what they call material weaknesses. You try to do as good as you can with having two sets of eyes, look at everything, and you do a good job at that on most any material-type transaction there. There's also something called the Audit Communication Letter in your packet. And that letter is, because CBA firms are not required to come to a meeting like this, we appreciate the opportunity to come and present this and answer some questions, but it just tells you whether we had any difficulties during the audit. Your staff is very cooperative, as I indicated. We're here a good four weeks, maybe longer, and, you know, they can get trying with us asking questions all the time and stuff. And everybody's very, very cooperative with us, and we didn't have any difficulties with your audit. And we kind of just, this letter just kind of goes over what we have tonight, as well as some things we've talked with administrations about some, although not material weaknesses areas, that you might want to consider doing a couple of things with, and they're on the back of that audit communication report. I can go into a lot more detail if you would like. I've got all kinds of time.
Do we have any questions or any on the report? All set?
Thank you, it's a pleasure to work with you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to compliment our administrator and our finance director on this report. It's excellent.
I would agree with that.
More importantly, was having the fund balance left at the end.
Here you go. We need a motion to accept this for... All right, next then, conceptual initiatives?
Nothing.
Old business, nothing new business. We have three items. Item A, Local Leadership Group Funding.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'll just briefly say that this request for funding, these grant funds through the state of Michigan, are, had been previously approved by you. The purpose, of course, is to try and develop a coordinated system of care for a highly vulnerable group of people in a very limited way. This is a broad concept that's being applied both nationally at the state level, that we all believe is needed, to reduce our health care costs and improve our overall health outcomes. So, this county has been identified as a county that has poor health outcomes in the infant, preterm labor areas, or premature births, poor, low birth weight infants, substance abuse in maternal situations, and as a result, we were eligible to apply for this grant several years ago. So, this is a continuation of the same dollars that we've been receiving, and I'd happy to report on our progress, which I do believe is excellent. I think we're well-purged at this point to utilize the product that we've developed and start showing some solid outcomes. And I just encourage you to ask any questions you might have, so I can clarify those for you.
Just, yes, just a quick question, doctor. This obviously is well, very well-needed in this county. Did I read correctly that we rank 79th out of 83 counties in our children being vaccinated for common childhood diseases?
You are correct.
So...
I do believe, and I'll just say, I do need to come back to you guys separately to just show you the state of our county's health as it's coming towards us with the various health indicators that are being rated, and how our county is progressively falling lower and lower into those rankings from multiple surveys. And I'd like to share with you that data. This is a somewhat separate issue, but our, the health of our children is a component of those rankings, including immunizations.
Not, but I was reading the Times-Herald, and there was that article in there about getting vaccinated young boys and girls against cervical, or for cervical cancer, for females in particular, but it's important that both the boys and the female, girls get vaccinated. And it's preventable, you know, cervical cancer.
And it's safe, and it's effective. We have a very large anti-vaccination trend throughout the country, but it seems to be particularly strong in this county as well.
Anyway, I hope this, I'm sure this is going to help out immensely you to meet your goals.
Thank you, I hope so.
Can I say so?
Sure, kid.
Has nothing to do with, well, something to do, but the, my grandson and I were going on a trip, and we had to get special vaccinations. I had no idea. First of all, the service we got at the Health Department was incredible. The, everything was explained, I mean, it was just, it was really, but what they offer there kind of blew me away in terms of vaccinations for children and whatever. It's really a heck of a resource. I'm ashamed to say, I didn't really know. But people really need to find out, because if they can't afford to get it done at a doctor's office or whatever, they, the services are there at the Health Department, they just have to go.
We have excellent staff.
Outstanding. I was, I was just blown away.
Very good. You want to take these one-on-one here?
I make the motion. Support?
Move and support it on item A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you want to move on to number B?
The Hub Grant is a component of the overall work towards coordinated care and services. It's all about getting the right person at the right time into the right program. We have a variety of excellent community resource, resources and services, and what we found, there are large gaps and silos in these services. Some people know how to get into everything they need, and some of the people don't get into anything they need. So, this hub is being developed to coordinate that referral process. It's built and ready to go, and we're really excited about it.
I had the opportunity to see the slide presentation that you did at the hospital about a week ago, and sit on an advisory committee at River District Hospital, and everybody there was really receptive to this hub idea and what you were doing with it. It's pretty much cutting-edge stuff right now, so, good job.
Thank you.
But any other questions?
I was just going to move that this item be sent on to the full board.
Second.
Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, did you move, we would need, I believe, immediate approval for these, since there are ongoing salaries and deliverables that are needed before the end of the fiscal year, September 30.
I would amend my motion for final action.
I would agree to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
And any questions on that motion?
Yes, do I see that you're going to have a meeting at the Port City that ties into all this, is, they're going to have a meeting, and then you're going to need final approval for your prior to that meeting, or after?
Port City is now developing a phase of the development that includes data collection and analysis, and they're presenting that to our local leadership group next week. And if approved, we are going to move forward with approving that payment for that portion of their development, which is one of the reasons I'd like to have all of this approved ahead of time. It's been an ongoing project.
So, you need us to move prior to them?
Pardon me?
You need us to move prior to the...
Correct. Actually, that is the C. I'm moving ahead of myself, that is C.
All right, all in favor of item B on that motion?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Item C on that Port City agreement.
So, that is the section that Mr. Rushing was just describing. It is the development of the phase of the hub where we can start looking at the referrals coming in, where they're going, and starting to share that information amongst the agencies that are involved. They obviously have been approved to develop this and have resources that they've used to develop this, and we'd like to approve that portion of their, their payment immediately, if we can.
Any questions on that one?
I do want to say that Port City has done an excellent job for us. They've been very involved at the state and local level. They understand what we need, and we've been very pleased with their support.
Is this for final action again?
Yes, please.
I would move that we approve it for final action.
Second.
Move and support it, all in favor?
I think we need a roll call.
Is this a roll call, because money?
Yes, right. Yes, should be.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
If I could, do you need final action on seven A also?
Yes, please, on all three items.
That's what we were just discussing.
Do we need to amend the previous for seven A? I know we gave it seven B and seven C.
We should, we should, we should...
You'll have to amend it, move to amend it, and it'll have to be a recall. I don't know who the moving party was on A.
It was Chad.
It was Commissioner Bohm.
Move to amend it.
Who supported that?
Tomian.
For the amendment?
Which is for final action.
Tomian, you do that one. Okay, for final action on that. Any questions on that?
I'd second the amendment. You're making the amendment for final action.
Sorry, okay. All in favor?
It's got to be a roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Commissioner Tomian?
Yes.
Commissioner Heideman?
Yes.
Commissioner Bohm?
Yes.
Commissioner Rushing?
Yes.
Commissioner Greathop?
Yes.
Commissioner Samasco?
Yes.
Commissioner Riley?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, if we have no other Human Services matters, we'll go into Information Only, Health Department's Point of Interest, August 2014. And...
You need a motion to, for the, file the Information Only?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and next, I'll take one for receiving and file packets.
Still moved.
Support?
Move and support it, receiving file packets, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move that we adjourn.
Support by Mr. Greathop. We need to adjourn.
I'd like to call to order the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Judiciary Public Safety Committee meeting. Clerk would please take the roll.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heideman?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Present.
Commissioner Greathop?
Here.
Any additions or deletions? Take a motion then.
I move the approval of the agenda as presented.
Support. Move and support it, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Any citizens wishing to address Judiciary and Public Safety Committee tonight? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners? No commis, or, sorry, none. And conceptual initiatives? Nothing. There is no old business under new business. Item A, Fiscal Year 2014 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant, Assistance Grant Award, in your packet, you have it in there. The amount of the award is $11,729. No local match required.
I would move that this item be moved on to the agenda for final action.
Second.
Move and support it. Any questions, discussions? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, it goes to the full board.
I think the motion is for final action.
Mass Notification Software and Overview. Jeff Friedland is here. Do you want to see his presentation, or do you want to make a motion and see his presentation?
Have him present first, I guess.
All right. You're up, Mr. Friedland.
Glad to hear. We'll make it quick.
You've got three minutes, all. You get whatever you need, buddy.
We've been working on a project through the Advisory Council that this commission appoints, and one of the issues we've addressed and tried to address over the years has been mass notification. And basically, what we have is a lack of a system that is very effective. We've got, we've got several different ones. However, you have to put a message in, send it out, you have to go to another system, put the message in, and Tim can attest that by the time you get all the messages out, the event's somewhat over. And so, what we want to do is just basically present to you this project we had actually submitted under, through the grant process a couple of years ago. It's, the state and the feds require that initially we have to propose what we're spending money for, and then they look at things and they decide amongst our proposals what they want to allocate funding. This was basically approved. All the paperwork has been approved with the state. The Advisory Council had made it a priority project, so this, this project is ready to go. But it's not a St. Clair government project. This is, this, in my eyes, has to be a public-private partnership. St. Clair County government would have a role in the fact that our office would administer this, and through development of all the parties of governance, guidance, then we can bring aboard partners that really would use the system to their own benefit in their own communities, and still have a county-wide situation as far as warning. Just examples of the overall emergency management side of use. Severe weather. Severe weather would come automatically. Dispatch would no longer have to do things in their center. Residents, businesses, everybody would get this all at the same time. Chemical releases, in-place sheltering. What's nice about the system is, if you have a plant and you have a plume, you can draw an area around, the affected area, and only those people would be notified. Evacuation, the same thing, is you can draw an evacuation area, and only those people would be contacted. And then, there's tools within the system that says, first of all, is, once you acknowledge you receive the call, we get that acknowledgement that, yes, that person did get it. But we could put questions in there, you know, can you evacuate? Push one. Do you need help evacuation? Push two. And that feedback comes back, and then the incident commander can then make sound judgment on what needs to be done instead of guessing. Closures. What's nice about this is, if we could get the road commission as part of the program. Right now, they fax out road closures. Faxes sometimes sit at fire halls... Faxes sometimes sit at fire halls because they're not manned. This would be one message, boom. Residents could sign up to get the same information. If they so desire, they would get it. If they didn't want road closures, they wouldn't sign up for it. And what I like too is the drinking water. I think you could effectively utilize this tool for along the river. Number one is notification of potential incidents in the river. Number two is it can be used by local communities that if you have a boil water in a water system, they can actually go in and take their community and notify the residents within their water district boundary. And I think that's really an opportunity, because it's gonna save a lot of time. Benefits, each partner has their own individual page. So a Marine City resident would sign up under the Marine City page. They would automatically get the emergency notifications from our office. But they would also, could also sign up for different things within Marine City. If they wanted just road closures in Marine City, if they wanted water issues. So if Marine City decided that tomorrow night they're going to flush fire hydrants, they could make a notification to the water system, the water users, to say, we're flushing fire hydrants tomorrow night, you know, and here's a message. So there's a lot of use for communities. The immediate weather notification is really good. It's GIS-based, as I said, you can target certain areas, you can do it by zip code. You could actually take this down to if you had a barricaded gunman. You could do the six or eight houses surrounding in that area to get a message to stay inside, but you can exclude the house with the gunman in. So he wouldn't be getting the information you're telling the people around them. Really, another one is it reduces central dispatch workload. Partnership, this is who we, and this is just the tip of the hat. Communities, hospitals, school districts. School district would have their own page. You could sign up for bus delays, you could sign up for school cancellations. And only those people that have signed up for that specific thing would be notified. And also, what's nice is, say, my, you know, my parents are getting up in age. They live in the Port Huron area, I live out by Yale. I can also sign up for notifications that affect them. So if they're getting an emergency message, I'm also gonna be notified that something's happening in their area, and I can check on it without worrying if they're gonna call me, or if they know about it, if they heard about it. Long-term healthcare, those facilities could use it for notifying their staff, to report back to work, to give messages to your staff. Utilities, businesses. We've conducted a lot of exercises, tabletop exercises in the past year. And just about every after-action report is the inability to quickly notify staff and customers. Within the county, looking at, Under Sheriff Buckley was part of the committee, and he looked at it and he says, I'm not gonna save dollars, but I'm gonna save time for overtime. He can have a list. And if he has an overtime position, he can put the message there. It will start down the list. They'll call the first one that says, we have this overtime available, would you like to work it? Push one for yes, two for no. If it's a no, it'll go to the next, it'll go to the next until he gets all of them. And what's nice about it, from my understanding from Sarnia Police Department, who is using the same system, is then at the next overtime, it could pick up where it left off. That's my understanding there. So administration, rather than to say, you know, on a snowy day, everybody listen to the media, and you can very easily take your county database, if it's in Excel, upload it into the system, and one message would immediately go out to every county employee. Or you could do just department heads, or you could actually do just individual departments, it's how you set it up. Certainly for us, for the Emergency Operations Center, I would love to know who's coming and how long it's gonna take. Versus just putting a message out that says, hey, respond to the Emergency Operations Center, and you don't know who's coming, or you have to sit somebody down and make 27 phone calls. So this would be, you know, Chris is a public information officer. She punches no, or she punches, I'll be there in 15 minutes, I know when she's gonna get there. Cost, there's an annual fee for this. Once again, is, there is grant funding. The overall system is $36,000, and adding the smart weather alerting is $5,400. And that's $4,100 and, $41,400. And what we've asked for is a contract, a one-year contract with four renewal options. Only because if this is a public-private partnership, at some point, if everybody backs off or that, I don't want to see the county being stuck for X amount of dollars. We would be looking at charging for the next year, we'd have that commitment. Revenue, for the first year, the grant would cover your complete membership. We want people to use it to say, wow, this is very worthwhile, this is saving me money. Second year, we build in grant funding for half of it. So the players that commit for a two-year period would get a reduced second year as we bring others aboard. And then the year three is we expect enough partners to fully fund it. In years four and five, we expect the cost per community or partner to go down, because we'll have more people using it. And the work group was both public and private. It wasn't just a couple of fire chiefs and police chiefs. We had a health department representative, we had, of course, police fire EMS, we had utility on there, we had township government, city government, schools were on it. So it's not just a very narrow slice of the pie's view of this. This is the whole community concept. Additional, you commit to two years, any new, and this is still conceptual, because we didn't want to lock something in until we were endorsed by you, or you're allowed to move ahead. But conceptually, we were looking at if somebody doesn't come aboard for the first two years, and they want to wait to year three or year two, there would also be a one-time membership or joining fee, because you waited. And then, once again, it's gonna help defray things. Every year, in September or so, you would look at your revenue, your fee structure, who's committed, you would adjust your fees for the next year. For government, fees would be based on population. And I think conceptually, the highest cost to a unit of government is 3,000, and the lowest is down below 1,000. Non-government units is based on the number of employees, because they would utilize it more as the notification of the people coming into work scheduling overtime. They wouldn't be using it for community notification that much. So those fees are 1,500 or less, and a lot of it is down around the 700, 800 dollar range. So we've had some verbal discussions, very brief, with a couple of school districts, a utility, some of the communities. There's a lot of interest in this. And I guess in summary, number one is the decision of Lampton County to utilize Everbridge. City Sarnia summed it up in their decision as, after 15 years of frustration, we finally are making a significant headway. And recently, they had a tornado up in Grand Bend. They were able to get out 51,000 messages in less than 14 minutes. And they attribute that as no loss of life. So that's very brief. I was able to get a couple commissioners to, at a test period, meeting with City of Sarnia, and they actually put a few of the commissioners on the system, and we did a test. The voice was clear. It was a non-emergency test, and it was within a matter of about 10 seconds. So emergency would be even faster than the 10 seconds. So we are set to go, the funding's setting there for the first year. Everything is approved. If we get your approval, we expect to, within 60 days, to begin the implementation of this. We're already somewhat drafting a government, their governance document. We're starting to put together the information for the partners. And since we get the go-ahead, if we get the go-ahead, then we'll start meeting with communities and explaining this to them. So that's it in a nutshell.
Kevin, any questions for Jeff? Jeff?
No. It's his meeting.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We're on Judiciary and Public Safety.
I was just gonna ask a question.
There's been a coup. You have to ask me if you want to speak, sir.
Mr. Greitout. Jeff, is it, it sounds like a whale of a program, it really does. And I know I did talk with you about it, went over it, and the individuals, have you had any opportunity to talk to anybody other than, I mean, in the community?
I mean. Just briefly, because I didn't want to get into anything that, I want something firm, especially the range for partners. I don't want to have them say, well, how much would this cost me? Well, I don't know. Don't want to get into that. But I think very quickly, the work group comes back together, we put this together and can move on it. I just didn't want to go too far without your approval.
We have, anybody with one or two questions? Commissioner Rushing has six.
No, I only have two. One, have you whipped the sheriff, have you ran this by our sheriff, see if he'd be on board with this?
Under Sheriff Buckley was actually on the work group, and he saw a lot of benefit to this. In fact, one, not to interrupt, but just what I did put on here is Boat Night, the missing child. With this, that area could have been circled, and everybody in that area could have been contacted to say, go look in your garage, go look in your car. That's the power of it. Yes, residents do have to sign up, but I think when you have every, you know, every partner getting them to sign up, when they're signing up for their community, they're also signing up to get the county information. So it's not the burden of one.
I think you do a great job, you've done, you know, your history in the county, you've done a great job. So I'm pretty much gonna support this. I do have a concern as far as the public service, whoever it is, designated by each community, is there a potential conflict of interest? Who's gonna put the information in and monitor it? Let's take the city of Marine City, or one of my townships, that if it's on your site, how do they know that's 100% correct? So there's no conflict that, let's say a tornado came through, and locals are trying to control it. They'll have somebody in control of that, whether it's a fire department, depending on the emergency. Would you have conflicting, or where are you gonna get the information so where it corresponds with who lives on the ground taking care of the emergency?
Access would, number one, is, still would be within the community, but the Emergency Operations Center would also have access. My goal is if we move forward, to sit down with Tiffany, and one point, we'll monitor everything. What I'm fearful of is, is somebody will sit there and just start sending out messages that, oh, don't forget the car wash this Thursday, and, you know, this is Bring Your Teacher an Apple Day.
I'm more concerned whether it's a supervisor, whoever the designated person in, like the city of Memphis, they have their own person on the police department that would direct whatever comments are gonna be made to the public, make sure that their comments coordinate with yours, and that you don't have a conflict that could potentially add to the situation.
City of Memphis can only send messages to the residents of Memphis. They have no ability to go beyond. City of Memphis cannot send, activate the tornado warnings for the county. That is all controlled by us. But I don't want to be called in the middle of the night, and Tim doesn't want to, you know, will you put this message out for us? It's your community, you have a responsibility, you're residents, here's a tool that will make your job easier. If it's something that is escalating, yeah, it's, you know, more people are gonna be involved in that. But that's the unique part of this. It's a partnership where we're giving you a tool to use within the confines of our governance.
I'll need more on it, but I support it.
Okay.
Commissioner Heidemann?
If there hasn't been a motion, I would like to make the motion that we send this onto the full board for approval for the Mass Notification Software and Overview Software System.
I support that.
Hey, I have a motion to support, any other questions from commissioners?
I would like to make a couple of comments.
Sure, go right ahead.
First of all, probably the only commissioner here that remembers this is Commissioner Riley. When we were talking about 9/11 dispatch and 800 megahertz system back over years ago, and I still remember quite vividly the story of the city of St. Clair and St. Clair Township. If they were called to a fire, and they both met, they couldn't talk to each other because they had different radio systems, so they had to send runners. We've kind of eliminated that. This brings us into the 21st century in terms of the safety of our community, you know. And by the way, the people in Sarnia that came over, did the presentation, excellent job. Fantastic job.
And this is basically the complete package. There is one small module that we're not ready for, and we might not even want, but it's a two-way communications app where if you get a picture of damage, it'll automatically go to a map and show that. But we're not ready for that, and in the event that we desired that, we would look at using some.
So the total package you're asking for is $41,400?
And talking with the administrator, I envisioned the maximum cost is the county government itself would be in the area of about $3,000. The rest is through the.
As we get more partners to sign up.
And once again, it's still, you know, a floating number, but that's, I think, a pretty solid number.
Commissioner Tomian?
I would just echo Commissioner Heidemann's. As I, like several of you, attended the demonstration on August 20th, and it was very impressive. The technology was impressive, and I was really impressed with the experience of the public safety officials from Lampton County and the city of Sarnia. I could tell that they were very enthusiastic about this product, and I can see it being of great value to all of the organizations in St. Clair County.
And we are actually itching, both of us, is, because Everbridge has a Canadian division in the US, there's a divide, believe it or not. But we're already pushing Everbridge to say, hey, we're one community with the River through. You know, let's cut out this Canada, cut out the US. How can we bridge our systems to maximize the use? So they're excited about that, we're excited if we move ahead, and I think the winners are the residents.
We're good, any other questions? Very none, all in favor of sending it on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you, Jeff. Moving on to item 7C, bid tabulation and recommendation for the 9/11 telephone system. You have your packet in front of you, and Tim Cogger is here. Tim, do you want to present, or you want to?
Does Tim have questions? Is that where you want this, sir?
Sure, let's see if we have any questions. It's a costly system, and maybe there are a couple of questions. How about a very quick overview of?
Just to understand, your current system is, it's called a Vestapalas system. It was made by a company called Plant CML. Plant CML was bought out by a company called Cassidian, who was just recently bought out by Airbus. This system is due to run out of support in March of 2015. There will be no more support at all. Right now, there's no remote support, there's no software upgrades occurring to this system. It is not next-generation 911 compliant at all. It is due to be replaced. So Rick Way and I from IT sat down with a couple dispatchers. We saw some demos about phone systems. The two companies, our phone systems, we came away with was the company that's Airbus now. It's called the Century Patriot system. And the other one is Entrado, which is a Viper system. They are both large companies in this area that supply 911 systems. They are all 911 compliant, it's next-generation 911 compliant. Entrado came in with the lowest price. The thing to know about the Entrado, it will offer us, give us a text-to-911 module, which is the first part of next-generation 911. So people will be able to use their smartphones and text 911. It's a good system, well-used, well-respected in this area.
Commissioner Tomian?
Tim, where's the money coming from to pay for the system?
We have money set aside, capital improvement funds to cover the cost for the system.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'll make motion we sent to the full. I'll make a motion to send it to the full board?
Motion to support for sending it on to the full board. Last call for questions. All in favor of sending it to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Very good. Tim, thank you for coming.
Yep.
Item 7D is the Anchor Bay School Law Enforcement Contract. You have that in your packet also. If there are any questions, we will try to do it. The sheriff is at a conference today, the undersheriff is at a conference today.
Mr. Chairman? Since this is a renewal of an existing contract that we've had before, I would move now that this item be forwarded to the full board for action.
I would second that.
I have a motion and a support to send it on to the full board. I do want to say, well, point out one thing that they did do in here, to keep the contract a little bit lower in cost for the community, for Anchor Bay, is they used some lower-priced deputies. When I say lower price, I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but some people who run the first or second steps of their pay scale, so that the costs would be a little bit lower for the school system. So, it's one of the things they did, try to contain the costs.
The step-two deputy instead of the step-three or four?
Correct. Anything else? All right. For the motion, then, all in favor of sending this on to the full board?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other judiciary or public safety matters? I have no information, so I'm ready to receive and file if somebody will make that motion.
I move to receive and file packets.
Motion to support to receive and file, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, and let's adjourn, gentlemen.
Move to adjourn.
I have six motions to adjourn, and I get one second. Second, I have a second. It is adjourned.
I'd like to call the St. Clair County Board of Commissioners Environmental and Public Works Committee meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm? Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Rushing?
Here.
Commissioner Greitman?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here. Do we have any additions, deletions, changes to the agenda? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
No move.
Support. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Any citizens to be heard regarding environmental and public works matters? Seeing none. Any updates from commissioners? Seeing none. Any conceptual initiatives from administration? None. No old business, no new business? The Smiths Creek landfill report is in your packet? Any other environmental or public works matters? Seeing none. Information only, the resolution from Bay County regarding the underground nuclear storage repository in Canada, the Marine City Drain Habitat Improvement, the DEQ grant, which really sounds fantastic when I read over that. That's going to be a great, great addition to your area, Bill.
Yep, it will.
And then, letters and testimony from Representative Terry Brown regarding the nuclear waste facility in Ontario, and he's right across from it. Okay, I would entertain a motion to receive the information only and finally...
I shall move.
Support. All in favor? Yes, sir.
I just want to say that the Marine City Drain, the fact that that money's going to Bob Wiley, he's going to manage that particular grant money. There was a possibility of 1.2 million. It didn't need to take quite that much money, so they've scaled it back a little bit. But Bob Wiley's going to handle that particular piece, the administration of those funds to get that particular project done. When that's done, Parks and Rec has property, along with the Drain Commissioner in the back for that canoe kayak launch system that will be in place. While that's being done, about 1.2 million will be administered over on Harson's Island for the Marine City, for the Crispin Drain Project. That will be administered by Clay Township. And at the same time, all of that's going on, in Contrafield Township, they are going to be developing that waterfront park and softening the shorelines there also. So, a lot of things are going to be happening in that area, starting in September, maybe October.
All good things. Okay, I would entertain a motion to, I have the motion, right? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried. At this time, a motion to receive and file packets pertaining to environmental and public works matter.
Also move.
Support.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
This time, I'd like to call the Ways and Means Committee to Order. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Samasco?
Here.
Commissioner Tomian?
Here.
Commissioner Heidemann?
Here.
Commissioner Bohm?
Here.
Commissioner Riley?
Here.
Commissioner Greitman?
Here.
Okay, moving on to two. I see we have an addition, deletion, and changes to the agenda with an A, and want to put that under updates. We have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we take item A under updates and make it, where do you want it?
4A.
4A?
Yes.
All right.
I believe that's correct, isn't it?
Well, no, you have...
We have 4B.
4B. 4B, make it 4B.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. This time, do we have any citizens wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll move to updates, 4A. We have a virtual desktop initiative.
I wanted to spend some time talking to you tonight about a project that the Information Technology Department's been working on since, actually, February. And it's a little bit difficult to explain, it's easier to show, but I'm going to do my best to explain it tonight. If something is confusing or doesn't make sense, please just stop me. I would rather you stop me and me explain what I mean than for you to not understand. So, the project is called, we call it BDI, and that stands for Virtual Desktop Infrastructure. And essentially, what BDI is, it's a software-based PC. So, the PC is accessed, your desktop is actually accessed from any type of device. It's not hardware-specific, and you can access it from any type of location. The desktop itself actually resides in the St. Clair County Data Center, so essentially, it's in the cloud, the St. Clair County private cloud. We are testing a multitude of connection methods. We, we can use a device like this, a little thumb drive, that connects into a monitor, and you can access your desktop from there. You can access it from a tablet or a laptop, but it's all software-based. There's a lot of benefits to BDI, and that's really what I wanted to talk to you about tonight, is what the benefits of BDI are. One of the benefits I sort of touched on already is the ability to access your desktop from any, any type of a device, from any location. So, the reason this is important is because we have a lot of mobile users now that are accustomed to smartphones and tablets, and you, as board members, understand the power of an iPad or a tablet device. Tablets are great, but they're limited. The reason they're limited is because if the application is not web-based or an email-type application, you probably aren't able to get to it. So, for someone like, I'm going to pick on Carrie for a minute, for someone like Carrie, who loves her job and just can't be away from her county work, she can't get into the financial data of the county system without jumping through a lot of hoops and having to have a lot of things previously configured. It's a cumbersome system that we currently have. If she's traveling, if she's on the road, if she's in Jamaica and she really wants to check, you know, what's going on at the county, she can't do it. With BDI, she could. She could take a device like this, put it in her pocket, fly to Jamaica, get to the hotel, plug it in, and she would have the same desktop that she sees at her office in her, you know, at the county. It would look exactly the same when she's in Jamaica on the beach. So, that is why I'm, and I'm being tongue-in-cheek, but there is, you can imagine there's a lot of power in that, a lot of flexibility for the end user, that they will see the same desktop they see whether they're at work, whether they're on their laptop at home, or whether they're on their tablet device. It's going to look exactly the same.
Just one question, is it going to be read and write? If the person has the ability to read and write, they can do that anywhere else, so rather than just read.
Absolutely. Absolutely. As long as they have security and access to the data, they can do anything they want, and the changes will be saved, and they'll see them when they access it from a different location, from a different device, because it's all in the cloud. The consistent end-user experience, as I sort of touched on, is the same no matter where they're at. The other really wonderful benefit of this is software upgrades. The way we do business today is, if we have a software upgrade, I'm going to pick on the financial NHR data again. We have what's known as One Solution, which is our financial and payroll software installed across every department in St. Clair County. Now, when we need to update that software, we have a network technician from our department that has to go to every single PC where that's installed, and they have to interrupt the user and say, "I need to get on your computer for a minute so I can do this install." They have to go to every location, which could, you know, include Marine City, District Court, all the way to Fort Grashut, or all the locations in St. Clair County where we may have PCs that need this software. They're running around doing this update. With BDI, because it's centralized in the St. Clair County Data Center, they do that install once. After they do the install, they test it, and then it's literally a checkbox. They say, "We want this install to go to all of these users," and that use, that install can be scheduled to install after hours. When the user logs off their machine, the next morning, the user comes in, they have the software. So, there's no interruption to the end user, and there's, it's a much quicker process for IT. So, it's a benefit to everybody, more efficiencies for the end user, less interruptions, and quicker response times for IT and for support. Now, in that scenario, there's also the case where possibly, maybe the install didn't go quite right. Maybe something was wrong that we didn't know ahead of time. We do our best to test, but maybe we missed something. So, in that scenario, we've had times where this happens. There's a problem. We have to uninstall the update. So, there the tech is, going around again, uninstalling that piece, that software in all those places. It happens rarely, but it does happen. In this scenario, literally, it's a checkbox. We say, "We want to roll back to the previous version." The technician checks the box, they push out that update, the user logs off their machine, they log back on, they have the old version of the software. So, the efficiencies are just amazing. I'm really excited about this solution. The other benefit, other than less interruptions, all the efficiencies gained, the other benefit is less hardware failures. The reason for fewer hardware failures is because the device you're using to access the solution has fewer moving parts. Because you can use a device like this versus a traditional PC that may have, you know, internal fans and moving hard drives and all those moving parts that tend to fail in hardware, those things go away. You have a device that is very simple, because it's a connection method. No data is stored locally. It can be a very simple, easy-to-use device. So, the hardware...
So, if this would eliminate any potential, like, two-years' loss of emails?
Well, it does re, it actually does eliminate that, because again, it's not stored local, it's stored in the data center, but it also eliminates those hardware, it doesn't eliminate hardware failures, but it reduces them. Now, if there is a hardware failure, we could have spare parts in those offsites. So, again, going back to the Marine City District Court example, currently today, if we have an issue in Marine City District Court that a technician can't resolve remotely, we do currently try to resolve as much as we can over the phone or remotely.
I could just...
Sure, go ahead.
Quickly, you do have two backup systems, right? One offsite and one on-site?
We do. We have a hot site at the Intervention Center, and then we also do backups to tape, and those are stored at the library.
So, even though you did crash at the one site, you'd still have the complete backup on-site, so you're up and running?
Yes. So, going back to the Marine City scenario, where a technician actually has to maybe go on-site because they can't resolve the issue over the phone, or maybe there's hardware they have to take, you know, the technician could be driving to Marine City, that takes 45 minutes, they're at the site for a couple hours, and then they drive home. So, they've just lost a half a day for potentially one issue. In this scenario, we would give Marine City District Court a spare device such as this and say, "Oh, your, your thin client failed? Okay, go get it, your spare one out of the closet and plug it in," and they're done. They don't really need IT's assistance for that type of an issue. So, again, efficiencies gained for everybody. So, why now? Why is this something that I want to do right now? The reason we're looking at it right now are numerous. One of the reasons is because we need to replace aging hardware. Due to budget reductions through the past few years, we've extended the life of our PCs. PCs on our network, some of them are five years old, some are as old as seven or eight years old. Those PCs need to be replaced. In addition to that, many of those PCs are running Windows XP, which is an operating system that's no longer supported. The problem with an unsupported operating system is that we no longer receive security updates from Microsoft, so if there's problems with malware and that type of thing, we don't get the patches from Microsoft. The other problem with an unsupported operating system is that the software companies that we use no longer support them. So, we're going to start to see, and we already have started to see, compatibility problems where certain software that we need to run does not run on Windows XP. We have 430 XP workstations on our network today, so that needs to be addressed. The increasingly mobile workforce, I already sort of touched on, so I won't rehash that. The last reason that I would like to do, look at this now, is for enhanced security and protection of data. Because we are becoming more mobile, and we're traveling around with our laptops and our tablets and all these devices, sometimes we're storing data on those devices. That creates a problem, because those devices are very easy to lose or get stolen. Now, you have a device with potential criminal justice, sensitive data, HIPAA data, those types of things, that may be at risk. Now, we do our best to secure it, but it's not 100%. And a system like this would make it much better, because nothing is ever stored locally, because it's all in the private St. Clair County Data Center. So, this addresses increasing criminal justice, security requirements, which are going to be, continuing to be more and more strict, and it protects our very sensitive data. So, what is the alternative? The alternative is to continue doing things the way we do it today. That would mean replacing our aging hardware and the PCs that are no longer supported because they run Windows XP. And in addition to that, we would need to upgrade our current network to address the criminal justice security requirements that we need to meet. If we don't meet the criminal justice security requirements, there are some strict penalties. We could be audited by the state, there could be federal and state fines. We could have our access removed, which would be, not only would the county's access be removed for criminal justice data, but all of our local agencies that go through the county would also have their access removed. In addition to that, we would also be at risk if there was a security data breach. The victim of that breach could sue us. So, now we'll talk about costs. So, the first option would cost about $400,000, and that option is to continue to do things the way we're doing it today, which I just touched on. Replace our aging hardware, 430 Windows XP workstations, and perform some network upgrades to, to meet the requirements of criminal justice, security requirements. We choose this option, there's not going to be any additional sufficiency gain, efficiency gains, it's just going to be basically status quo, do business the way we do it today. The next option is to go ahead and implement BDI. Now, that would cost $600,000. I'm proposing 700 workstations. The reason I'm proposing 700 workstations is because the more workstations that we implement, the lower the cost per workstation. This breaks down to be about $850 per workstation, which is about the cost of a PC. So, it's... So it's not an unreasonable number. I do understand it's a big number upfront, but it will, the more workstations we implement, the more our efficiency gains, and the lower our overall cost. The final option is to take a phased-in approach. A phased-in approach would be to implement the VDI workstation solution for those PCs that are end-of-life with Windows XP on them, and then to implement the rest of the workstations as funding and time allows. This solution actually costs $750,000. The reason for that is because we get a cost-per-copy, we get a cost-per-seat software licensing discount by purchasing more licenses upfront. So if you purchase less licenses, there's actually a markup. And in addition to that, the CEGIS security requirements for criminal justice are still not addressed. So ultimately, it would cost us more. So going forward, I, we are testing currently. As I mentioned, the IT department kind of did a proof of concept in February, and currently we're taking the next step and testing with some key users in St. Clair County. About 30 users, we're testing this solution with today. And what we're hoping to get from that is an evaluation and feedback from the users, that yes, this really is a good solution, this is working well for us. Our goal is that this will work for St. Clair County employees the same or better than what they have today. We don't want it to be a step back, we want it to be better, or at least the same. So we're going to wait for our feedback from the users to know it's really working as well as we believe it will. Assuming we get positive feedback, I'm going to come back to you in a month or two and ask for approval of implementation of VDI. Implementation, I believe, will actually be fairly simple, because we've done a lot of testing. We're running the environment currently in production with some of our key users. So the actual implementation expansion of the process should be simple. So that's pretty much my presentation. You know, at this point, we're going to have to spend some money either way, so my hope-
I have one question. You came up with three cost scenarios, 400, 600, or 750,000. Annual, or?
No, those are the one-time costs. There would be, for any solution, there's going to be ongoing maintenance costs, and, you know, we pay those today. I don't really anticipate those-
My next question would be, Carrie or Phil, where's the money coming from? But other, any other questions, Carrie?
Your recommendation is clearly the $700,000 recommendation-
600.
-and putting the 700 desktops in place.
600,000 for 700 desktops.
600,000.
Yes.
700 desktops?
Yes.
Okay, option two.
Yes, that is what I am recommending. You know, at minimum, we're going to spend 400,000. It's my belief that spending the additional 200,000, I understand that's a lot of money, but my belief is spending the additional 200,000 gains us so much efficiency and such a better end-user experience that it's going to be worth that money in the long run.
Just another side question, if you don't mind. Typically, what is your budget for, let's say, laptop or PC replacements each year?
In round numbers, about 100 grand a year.
Okay. And some of them are seven years old?
Yes.
Do you have any other questions?
Going back to Dave, what's the plan if we were to look at Bill? Carrie, what's the thoughts?
Well, we've been, we have been talking about this, and I don't think we've come to any resolution as to how we would pay for it at this point, but we thought it was important enough that we needed to get Tiffany in front of you to start sharing the information with you. The other thing that we wanted Tiffany to do was to implement this in a test scenario with a number of users, those that, users that are potentially the most mobile, so we can give it a good, solid test. She's been testing it internally with some of her staff. She began doing that earlier this year, and we thought it was important that some of the, let's say, less-power users, those of us that aren't quite as techie as her staff, take a look at it before we come to you and say, "Okay, here's what we feel we really need, here's how we're proposing to fund it." So we're still on that testing stage. It was just installed on my system, I think about a week ago. Carrie's was, I think, last week part of it, or early this week, I think it was. So it's still being tested, we're still talking about how we can-
So no motion is going to be required tonight?
Oh, no. No, tonight is just for information only.
And I do have it running on my iPad.
I have another question here. You were saying that this would be a lot easier on hardware. So you're saying that these desktops would have a life expectancy longer than our present PCs, so therefore, even though we're spending, let's say, 100,000 a year on replacement costs, these desktops could actually have a longer longevity, therefore-
I believe so, yes. I believe they'll have a longer longevity. Also, a lot of the devices are less expensive than a PC. So we're testing a number of devices. They range in cost, some of them are as low as $40. We have to test them and make sure that they're really going to work the way we want. But I do, they, even the most expensive device is less than a PC, so there is a lower cost and a longer longevity. Also, for users that are mobile that may already have a county-issued iPad, there's no reason that we would need to get them a second device. We could supply them with a keyboard, a mouse, and a monitor, and they could use their iPad for their computer, and they would not need a second device.
So, I'm thinking of this maybe in somewhat business terms, but we're talking about making a 600,000 initial investment, but if you amortize the cost of this out, let's say, over the next five to 10 years, it actually may be a wash?
It will probably be a wash, yes.
Do you have any further questions? Nothing further, thank you very much.
And if anyone wants to see it after the meeting, I have it on my iPad tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tiffany.
Okay, we'll move on to 4B, and this will be the Corporate Counsel Discussion on the Written Legal Opinion on the 318 Grand River. Turn it over to Mr. Fletcher.
Thank you. I've given all of you a copy of the opinion, or billed it, and it'll be publicized. The, I know, probably a few weeks ago, I was asked to give an opinion on an issue that was framed something like, "Did the Library Board violate the millage language?" And that language says that the millage money is to be used and dispersed for the sole purpose of providing operating funds for the St. Clair County Library System. And the question was, "Did the County Library Board violate that, those restrictions on that language by using millage money to contribute their share, which was $200,000, toward the purchase of what I'm going to call the yard van property, because that's what everybody calls it?" And so what I did, the first thing I did was get some background information from Allison Arnold. I really, I wasn't involved when this happened. I obviously knew what was going on, but I wasn't involved in the library end of it. What Allison told me, and I also understand she presented in many public forums when the library millage was up for renewal here just a little while ago, is that the Library Board determined and has considered for a long period of time, expansion of or replacement of the main branch. And the reason is, it's very old, it has a lot of antiquated systems, it's too small, and it's not ADA compliant. And the problem is, unless they expand where they're at, they have nowhere to go, and if they're going to expand where they're at, and then they're going to have to go into the county parking lot, that's right over here, behind the main branch and across the street. And if they do that, they would have to replace the lost parking somewhere, and obviously that was a good opportunity. So the Library Board considered that and voted to spend the money for that purpose, and that was a decision solely made by the Library Board. I also asked Allison, because the question sort of presupposed that the millage money, that's one of those things that just sort of caught a life of its own. You know, the question that was asked to go to the AG's office, the question that's been in the newspaper, the question that was presented to me, was, "Did they violate the ballot language by using the millage money?" So this whole idea that they use the millage money kind of took on a life of its own, and I kind of, for a while, until Paul Bailey set me straight, I was kind of assuming that that was the way it was. But I did ask Allison where the money came from, and she said, "Fund balance." And the library has about 2.4 million in fund balance. And I asked how, what that was comprised of, and it's roughly 76% in millage and the rest, 24% other sources of funds. We did some legal research next. I had a couple people in our office look into it and do extensive searches for cases, attorney general opinions, anything that might help. There was one attorney general opinion that was, is kind of on point, that I'll get to later. But the next step was to call Paul Bailey. And what I, and the reason I went to him is, he is, in my opinion, Stuart Bovia Whipple and him in particular, are the leading experts, the leading firm in public audits and public accounting in St. Clair County. And they do public audits all over the place. And truthfully, what I knew would happen is if this money was improperly used, he would ding him in the audit, guarantee it. And, because that's what he gets paid to do. If something inappropriate was done in terms of expenditure or fund that it was used for, he would be the one that would have to call them out on that. And I've had clients where he did the audits before, where he called them out on something, where they didn't get it right, and he, you know, had them straighten that out. So what I said, that the first issue was that the assumption that, assuming that millage money was used somehow, or a mix of millage money, say 76% millage, 24% non, because that's the mix of their fund balance, that that would violate the ballot language. And he said, he had, he said, "I have to tell you, I don't agree." Well, at first, he said, "What's the basis of, what's the premise that you're operating off of, that you say that wouldn't be allowed?" And I said, "Well, it's a capital expenditure." And he said, "Well, that, those operating funds today are used for capital expenditures." He said, "They buy furniture, equipment, and make other capital expenditures out of that operating money." And he said, "Every governmental entity does." You know, whether it's the county, township, school districts, places he audits, they all use millage money for capital expenditures. So he said, "I have to tell you, I don't buy your basic premise out of the chute." But he said, and then we talked a little further, and then I said, "Well, assuming that the people that believe that this is a problem are correct, the, is that basically what you would conclude, that they, it was partially millage money, say 76%, and partially non-millage?" And he said, "Well, you're also wrong there." Because he said, "The county has a longstanding policy." I attached it to the letter. I don't know if you got it in your attachment, but if not, you'll get it, because it came with the opinion I sent. He said, "Basically, that policy has been in the audit for a long, long time, in the county audit." And he said, "What it provides is that if there are restricted and non-restricted funds, the restricted funds are used first." So that would be the millage restriction operational purposes. He said, "If those restricted funds cannot be used, or it's questionable whether they could be used, then you go to the less restrictive or the non-restricted money, and that would be the 24%." The 24%, so if you buy the basic proposition that that 20, or the 74% or 76 can only be used for operation, no capital expenditures, which is a theory some people have been operating under, then what he said, if you assume that basic premise is true, which he doesn't agree with, then you would then go to the unrestricted money, which is the rest of their fund balance, and the only restriction there is that it has to be used for library purposes. It's their fund balance, however the board determines that that money would be spent. So, truthfully, I came, I went to him with two premises, and he didn't agree with either one of them. That number one, millage money could not be used for operational purpose, or for capital expenditure purposes, because it is. And number two, that the, if there, if some of the millage money was used and, or proposed to be used, and it would be allocated to the millage money, and he also disagreed with that, because he said, "If the restriction prohibited it, then it's allocated to the non-millage, other sources that are in the fund balance." So he disagreed on both premises. The other thing that I gave some thought to, and I didn't spend a lot of time doing extensive research on this, but the question is, why did they, and he and I kind of talked about that, in the different county funds, is when this millage was passed, it says "to be used and dispersed for the sole purpose of providing operating funds for the county library system." And personally, I think the reason that was put on there is because some of the funds that exist within the county system and the county audit, if you look at the county audit, well, you got it tonight, you're going to see the library fund is a part of the county financial reporting and financial system. So it's not like a separate legal entity, say like the Road Commission, that has its own budget, its own audit, and isn't part of the county audit and the county funding. I personally think, and again, I didn't want to waste a lot of time trying to dig into ballot history and so on, the reason that restriction was put in there is so those funds that are part of the county funds, if you will, or family of funds that are in your audit, could not be used for any other county purpose. They had to be used solely for library purposes, to operate the library system, which would include capital expenditures. As I indicated, we did a lot of legal research, because if there was something out there, I wanted to find it. There were no cases, but there was a attorney general opinion, an '82 opinion out of Jackson County, and a ballot proposal was passed there that said to the electorate that the funds were to be used exclusively for the purpose of establishing and operating a single public library system in Jackson County. So the AG was presented with a question, is, there was, the issue was, was the Library Board then restricted in how it could use those funds if they were used for the library system? And the attorney general said, "No, they weren't." And what, the reason they said, and it was under a different statute, that basically the judgment was given to the Library Board and the authority to decide how to make those expenditures. And it was a different statute, but the statute under which our library exists has virtually identical language, that says, "The governing board has exclusive control of the expenditure of all money collected and credited to the library fund." So it was their call anyways, which they made. So based on all that, I have a summary of my opinion, but my opinion is, number one, as Mr. Bailey indicated, there is no legal basis or public accounting basis to conclude that millage funds could not be used for capital expenditures like this, number one. Number two, if you assume they couldn't be because of the ballot restriction, so if you assume that basic premise is right, which he doesn't agree with, and after talking to him, I don't think I do either, then what you would do is go to the unrestricted money, and there's more than enough in their fund balance, so you would allocate it to those funds, the unrestricted funds, and there's more than enough money to make this purchase in their fund balance. So I don't find there's any violation of anything, ballot language or anything else. And the other thing I would say is, truthfully, when I started out on this, I was kind of, I didn't really know. When, the way the question was posed, I thought there could be a problem. I don't think it's a close call, having talked to Mr. Bailey, done the research, and got to the end of it. And I would welcome the AG to review this. We had another opinion once that was pretty controversial. We actually had two of them that they looked at, and they agreed with us both times. A third extremely controversial opinion that we gave was litigated to the Michigan Supreme Court and upheld there. So it's, I don't throw these out there to give somebody the answer they want, because I understand they may be, well, first of all, it's not the way we operate. But number two, I understand it may be looked at at the Attorney General's office and other law firms and the courts, and I don't care, because I don't think this is a close call at all. So that's it. It's been released to the newspaper, and anybody else who wants it.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Yeah, I'm just going to make one, because there's been a lot of information, obviously, recently on this, and as many of you remember, Representative, Senator Pavlo was here probably a month ago, and we also encouraged Phil to move forward and take a look at this. I don't think we're hiding behind anything. I'm just a little bit, I don't know, surprised why we would have, or why a out-of-area legislator would be asked to look at this, when we have four different legislators here that represent us locally- here that represent us locally. And the processes either come through a state rep or a state senator here locally. So, that, that one, like I said, has kind of missed me a little bit. But I do encourage and do welcome the opinion. Gary, I know Gary spent a lot of time on this. And looking forward to see what the, you know, other opinion would come. But I do have a lot of confidence in Gary. Before we even moved forward with this, we had discussions of this previous, so.
Mr. Semaskoff.
I've given this quite a bit of thought myself. I appreciate your opinion, Gary. I actually drafted a resolution to restore the funds on a basis of the fact that there are a number of people that disagree with it. I mean, there's a legal basis for it. It kind of blindsided me. I'm a lawyer. I never gave it a second thought that this was not an appropriate expenditure. I was talking to Terry Gill, who's attended a lot of our meetings, and talked about the fact that some people just don't like the way that was done. I mean, I know the county has always had the monies available to cover this from county general funds, which I originally objected to. I felt it was not a county purchase. It was not a need, it was more a want. And it was wanted by the department, so they should use their funds to pay for that. But it seems like a huge distraction. I mean, there's newspaper articles that there's representatives from other parts of the state are going to be, you know, involved, people are getting them involved to look at it. I just think it would, might be prudent to at least consider that, to resolve this, to restore those funds from the capital improvement fund or whatever, and just kind of move on and close the book on it. I don't know how you guys feel about that. But I did draft a draft resolution and sent it out by email earlier today.
Let's take it under consideration perhaps in a couple weeks.
I'm not asking for now. I'm just saying it's something to look at and think about, because really, rather than just continue on with the saga and distraction and all the turmoil, it really doesn't have a lot of practical effect. It's a capital purchase. The county can do it, and we can put it to that purpose. And, you know, we can straighten it out later to whatever degree we think necessary. It just seems like it'll put an end to the issue. You know, I thought about this prior to the, you know, not that it's a political issue, but prior to the election, I was really concerned about the Parks or the millage fund for the library. You know, they were up, and it passed very easily, very well, which was fabulous. But still, there's a certain segment, all the turmoil and all the grief and all the hand wringing, and, you know, I just thought, why prolong this? Just get it behind us and do it the other way. And I don't think anyone can really have an objection if we did it that way. So, that's it.
Mr. Ideman.
I appreciate your sentiments, Mr. Semaskoff. A couple things that I would like to point out. First of all, if nothing else, I think it put a spotlight on the needs of the library system. They really need to do something with the building. And their recommendation to modernize that building and to expand it to meet the needs of this community, I think, was put out there. I think the community now understands that. And I think that was one of the reasons why the millage ultimately passed, because people were waking up to the needs of the library building. And so, from that standpoint, yes, there's a lot of discussion. But I think some good things can come out of that.
Evidently.
Yeah. And if nothing else, it created dialogue in the community about the needs. Second thing, point I would like to make. We had a lot of discussions for three or four months prior to that purchase. I did not hear a single county commissioner ever saying it wasn't in the county's interest to buy that building. I didn't hear any argument not to buy it. The only discussion I really heard was-
It was not in the county's best interest, Howard. I just wanted to clarify.
Pardon?
It was not in the county's best interest not to buy it. You said it was not in the county's interest.
It wasn't their best interest to buy it. Stand. The only discussion was, how do you pay for it? And that, there was disagreement.
Howard, Mr. Riley.
Well, I remember when it came up very clearly. And my position was at the time, I think, I thought there's a lot of potential for that. I was not in favor of doing it out of general budget, because I didn't feel that it was, that was the way to go. And at that time, I was informed that the library and the parks were interested in being the people that were going to buy this. And at that time, if we didn't control their budget, and if they wanted to do it, I had no problem with that. My problem came back is when we had, the night we voted on it, it was, came back as if the library and the parks didn't do what they were going to do, that we had to give the money back to them, thus put it back into the general budget. I didn't like that, because I don't want to pull out of our general budget to buy that property, even though I'd like the opportunity. But at this point, number one, I see as we own the property, be it the library and the parks are right in the midst of this. I have to agree, at this point, I think we should get them out of it. I think, I have to agree with you, Steve, that at this point, it's ours. Whether I like the point that we bought it the way we did, the point is, the library got caught in the middle of something. As sometimes it says in the paper, a loan, it also says that if we don't do what they say or they don't do what they're planning on doing, we got to give the money back to them. So, we're kind of caught right now. We own the property. And I think what we ought to do right now is get them, get the parks out of it and get the library out of it. And it's not coming out of, I understand, because I asked the question, is it coming out of our general or is there some funds that we could take it from? And if there is, then I think we ought to go that direction and get it out, get it away from, because I don't want it coming out of our general, just plain general budget.
Yeah, Howard?
I would have no problem with that. My caveat would be this. If the library wants to move forward with the expansion, which is sorely needed, we will sell them the south parking lot over here, but that parking has to be made up. You know, and, you know.
And that's, that's not a loan. They're giving back to what they should. And that's the way I look at it too.
And the same thing with park and rec.
Exactly.
I think we put it on the agenda in two weeks. You know, we can have some more information. If there's information you would like Bill and Carrie to pull together on it, you know, so be it.
I had one question for Gary too, on your opinion, Gary. The statement, I think this is the correct version, but-
What's that again?
It was on, I want to make sure I have a correct version. It's one that was on my table today. You state that, let's see, you know, that the legal expenditure, it was a legal expenditure, and the purchase should be charged to a non-millage fund balance. Is there, does that relate also to Parks and Rec? Because your opinion really talked about the library. Is there any, would that have carryover to the Parks and Rec? Or I don't think they have anything that's not millage funded.
Now, they, well, their millage funds have much broader language. So, they specifically use those funds for property acquisitions. They do today.
So, it's not, it's not an issue for that reason.
It's totally, it's apples and oranges.
But because of the library language in their millage, that was specific to that.
That was the issue that was presented to me. That's the issue that's been in the newspaper. That's the issue that, you know, was going to go to the AG or whatever. And that somehow that ballot restriction meant you can't use that money for capital expenditures.
Very good. Thank you.
I don't agree with it.
Do you have any comments? I'd like to state that right from the first start of this, this had the full library board's support. And under this, and I've been always very tight with the dollars. It was never, I never understood it that a single library dollar was not being spent for library purposes. And I think partly, maybe the cart got in front of the horse, or however you want to state it. But we could not give up that parking until we purchased the property and had other purposes for that. Until we purchased that, the whole intent was for the library to expand for their part in this, so they have an asset. But we had to get additional parking. Until that became county property, we could not have made that decision anyways. And this was to further the library. And the library has done an excellent job. Not only with Allison here, but they've done an excellent job. And the whole board supported this. That's my part. I, at no point did I ever think that library millage dollars were not being spent for library purposes, or I never would have supported. All right, if that's all on that, we will now move on to conceptual initiatives. Do we have any? Seeing none, we'll move on to old business. Seeing how we have none, we'll move on to 7A, new business. Friend of the court, Parks Recreation and Menu Table Changes.
Chairman, I move that this be sent on to the full board for approval.
I have a support. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Moving on to 7B, Administrator Controller Employment Agreement Extension. And this is for final action.
Mr. Chairman, the board has appointed me to work on our administrator's new agreement. And we've been trying to work around some major projects that we have in some of my vacation time. We haven't been able to completely get all of these issues ironed out. So, we have a specific proposal to present to you. It's not that there are any problems from my own perspective, and I haven't had a chance to meet with Gary and talk about it. When I look at the existing agreement, it's one that appears to me has been added to over the years for past administrators. And when you take a look at the situation that we have with our existing administrator, it isn't clear and it isn't applicable. And what I'm striving for, and I think Bill agrees with me, is to come up with a simpler, more straightforward document. And I think with the requested 60-day extension, which we're asking for final action tonight, we will have an agreement to bring back for your consideration.
I'd support that if that's a motion.
Just a little comment too, because that's Carl. When people ask me, you know, as far as Bill's contract, and I said, "Carl, Tommy's working on it. I just want people to," and everybody on this board realizes this, but Carl has a tremendous amount of experience and the, you know, public sector, former city manager, so on and so forth. He also served on the search committee for the Michigan Municipal League.
I was a consultant for the league that did executive search. And as part of, part of those consulting duties, we helped municipal employers reach agreements with their administrators.
So, hence, Carl's probably got more experience than anybody that we've got in this county at doing this thing. So, I feel very comfortable, granted, you know, when people say commissioner, but his outside expertise lies in that. So, I'm very fortunate that Carl will be able to do that, so.
Any other comments? I do have one. I think Carl's the right person for this. He has extremely a lot of knowledge in this and experience, and he's the right person. And this is only for a 60-day extension. So, this is to extend his contract, and they will continue to work on it. So, the contract will be coming up again, but this is just to extend his current working agreement, correct?
Yes, I don't, I don't think it's fair for our administrator to go forward without, without being covered by an agreement because of delays that perhaps I'm largely responsible for.
Right, no other, further, I'd like a roll call, I believe, on this. You don't need to, to extend the contract? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, we'll move on to 7C, the Blue Water Convention Center, Generator Transfer Switch. Would, Mr. Bohm, give us an update on that?
Well, actually, we just had a meeting previous this with our change order committee, which worked, the three of us, on a few change order issues with the convention center. They want to come back in two weeks with us with some other possible options. I don't think there's anybody on this board looking to spend $400,000 on the generator, okay? The original intent was, as far as having the ability to be able to hook up into something at a later date, whether it was permanent, whether it's portable, so on and so forth. So, they've got a couple other things, you know. We talked a little bit today. Are they able to run the conduit, pull the wire to later, you know? So, they're still exploring some alternatives to that possible solution, really. And they're going to come back in two weeks and present to us some ideas.
Do we need a motion to, just for the transfer switch? Do you need that to move forward? Or, because you said that this is going to be time-sensitive. If they're doing work there, we don't want to go after the fact, because it'll be more expensive.
They still got, they still got time. They want, they want to come back in two weeks.
This potentially be on the October full board?
Uh, two weeks.
Well, that would be final action. They'll be coming, potentially anyways. Don't have any motion tonight.
No, we could always, I mean, I mean, just put it on for that time. Yeah. So, no action.
So, no motion is required on this?
No.
And we will move on to 7D, survey and re-
Remonumentation.
Remonumentation peer group appointments.
Mr. Chairman?